Okay, it is seven o'clock. We would like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of Community Consolidated School District 62 Board of Education. Could we have a roll call, please? Here.
Duckman.
Here.
Garrett.
Here.
Erin.
Here.
Massa.
Here.
Morley.
Here.
Weller.
Here.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have a motion to add to the agenda?
I move that the Board approve the November eighteenth, 2024 meeting agenda as presented.
Second. The move in second, we have a roll call.
Duckman.
Aye.
Garrett.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.
Massa.
Aye.
Morley.
Aye.
Weller.
Aye.
Aye. First up tonight is recognition of school board members, American Education Week 2024 winner card design CAD test winners and 62 video presentation. Who's recognizing school board members?
Everybody is. Oh, wow, it's a surprise party.
I recognize all of them, but we spend a lot of time together, so that's why.
Well, President Burton, we're going to start with showing the Cumberland Buddies video for our 62 stories because we want to end with our artists and go out to the hallway and have treats after that. So if Adam Denenberg could go ahead, we're going to show you a video series on Cumberland Buddies, our educational life skills students and teachers. And I love this video. Here we go.
What do you like about Buddies?
I like my friend, friends. I like my friends.
Buddies is designed to support the many life skills required to build peer relationships and teach skills such as turn-taking, sportsmanship, being a good buddy, and following group expectations. The importance of peer modeling and support through play and learning opportunities for Gen Ed and ELS students within our school.
ELS stands for Educational Life Skills, which is a program that incorporates educational life skills and follows a structured teaching model. This supports students with differing abilities focusing on functional skills and communication.
It's good to feel like to include people. It feels good. That's my favorite part about Buddies, is that we can include people into other activities. What I have learned from Buddies is that it's good to include others because we're all human and we can all play with each other. Just because we have differences doesn't mean we can't play together and enjoy time together.
Since starting Buddies, it has been so cool to see general education students utilizing our students' method of communication. Many of them have learned how to use our students' talkers to facilitate basic conversations and support social communication during play.
My favorite thing about Buddies has to be that we can go down, do like stuff with them, like there'll be sand, sometimes it'll be Play-Doh or something we can build and stuff and everything and play with them. That's to be my favorite thing.
I learned from Buddies that everybody is different in their own ways, and that's what makes each of us unique. We should include others because we wouldn't like to feel excluded, and why would we want other people to feel that way?
What I've learned from Buddies is that we should be kind and include everybody. We should include everybody because being excluded doesn't feel good, and we shouldn't spread that feeling around.
I've learned from Buddies is that you should give everybody chances, and I think we should include others because so all people get chances to be included.
What's your favorite thing to do at Buddies?
At Buddies? I like to talk with my friends and play.
I've learned from Buddies is inclusion is important and helping is too because we can help them understand what to do. We could make them feel happy because they might not always get included by others.
Buddies has helped to create positive relationships amongst our entire school. It helps our students feel included when their buddies recognize them and call them over during recess to play. They also get recognized in other environments outside of our classroom, which supports other students' relationships with our kids.
My favorite thing about Buddies is seeing all my friends from recess and specials that I don't get to see a lot. I have learned that everyone is special and cool even if they look, think, or sound different. We should include others because people are different, but they can be awesome in different ways.
Buddies has been such an important part of our students' learning this year. We are looking forward to continuing Buddies next year and seeing how the students are able to continue forming relationships with their friends.
Thank you to, I think our Assistant Principal for Cumberland is here. Where's Ms. Mazzoni?
Behind the corner.
Trying to hide in a corner.
Behind the book side.
Special thank you to your team and for all the work you guys have been doing throughout the district, but of course, that's inspirational for all of us, so thank you. Thank you. You're up, Ms. Boba.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone for taking a few minutes to celebrate some wonderful children in the district. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Tempest-Boba. I am the Director of Community Relations for the district. We have a trifecta of celebrations happening, so I will begin. Friday, just a few days ago, was November fifteenth, which was School Board Members' Day, and our seven board members spent countless hours dedicating their time to supporting the students and the staff of District 62. And your commitment to our district is truly inspiring, so we wanted to say thank you. Good-looking group of people. And then today kicked off American Education Week, where we honor over eight hundred staff members that do so much on behalf of the children of District 62. I really believe this week is also about recognizing the partnership between our board members, our administration, our staff, our teachers, our parents that work so hard to create an exceptional learning environment in our district. And you do it for children, and may we continue to work together to build a brighter future for our children. So thank you to the Board, thank you to our staff. And now we get to the main event. So tonight we are here to recognize three very special budding artists, and I invite Dr. Amade and President Burton to join me at the moment. I got excited, sorry. Okay, we're going to begin by recognizing Olivia Mckowski from Chippewa Middle School.
Congratulations. Where can we come over here and have an artwork photo? If family wants to come closer, you can.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Okay, coming in at second place is Grace Jax from Aricoy Community School.
Congratulations. Thank you for doing all your work. We're going to get a picture with you, is that okay? Most important is Dad got the picture, right? Congratulations.
And our first place winner is Arish Arsalan, who is a sixth grade Chippewa Middle School student.
Congratulations. Good job. Come on, homeboy, you're good.
Yeah, that's the most important thing.
Oh, congratulations.
Before we take a minute to have some refreshments, we would be remiss if we did not recognize the Samuelson and the Frisbee Senior Center who opened their doors for the third year in a row. We had over seventy entries this year, and we had community leaders and seniors take time to look at all of these beautiful works of ours, so we are so appreciative, and we thank the Frisbee Senior Center. And we also will acknowledge the Disland Public Library because they will be hosting all of the entries through the month of December. So if you have a moment, we invite you to come to the Disland Public Library and check out the beautiful artwork of the children of District 62. Incredible. Before we conclude for refreshments, can I ask all three winners to come up for one final picture?
Bring your plaque.
And your parents.
And Moms and Dads, if you want one more picture, any way you want.
Are you guys' pictures coming out okay?
All right, now the transition, so. So you should give those plaques to your parents and then go first, artists, to come out in the hall here and get some sweet treats. We're going to take a little break so that we can acknowledge the work of our students, and then we're going to come back in here and get to business. So if you'll just give us about a five or so minute break, we're going to enjoy some treats, okay? Thank you to everybody for coming. It's good to see everyone. All right, we're going to let the students go first.
Next up is public comment. I did not receive any blue cards, so we're moving on past that. After that is student performance monitoring, District 62 assessments, including IAR, ISA, DLM, and ACCESS. Ms. Weller.
Hello. Hello, our team is going to take it over.
Assessment team.
Yes.
It's a team.
Assemble.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Amade. I am Kristi Bowman, Curriculum Coordinator and Data Specialist for the district, and I'm joined with Ms. Amy Senkall, our Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services; Mrs. Libby Jaskiewicz, our Director of Multilingual Programs, and Dr. Romi De Cristofaro, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Together, we are here tonight to review and share some highlights from our state assessments. You will see throughout tonight's presentation that we have a lot to celebrate, and it's a district, and it is largely a result of our dedicated teachers as well as the hard work of our students. We would be remiss if we didn't open in gratitude to both our students and staff for their efforts each and every day. For tonight, we will begin by looking at information around the Illinois State Report Card, which was released late last month. Following that, we will highlight data from each of our state assessments that students in the district take over the course of each year. Last, we will share a summary of the data, highlighting our strengths, opportunities, as well as move our next steps in responding to the data. So first, we will take a quick look at our Illinois State Report Card. Each year, the Illinois State Board of Education provides each school with a summative designation based on their Illinois State Report Card data. This list highlights the data that is currently included in determining that designation in addition to some indicators that will be included in the future. You can see those kind of grayed out at the bottom, the last three that are listed. Later in this presentation, we will share more about some of these indicators, specifically in the academic areas, and how our students perform on various state assessments. As you can see from the chart, growth on IAR and both ELA have the largest impact on each school's overall designation. A school receives an overall score as well as scores for each student population group within their building, which then determines their overall designation. There are five possible designations that a school can receive from the state board. I'm going to highlight the three that we have for schools in our district this year. The additional two designations that are not listed are comprehensive support and intensive support, which again, none of our schools received. As you can see, exemplary is the highest designation that a school can receive. This places a school's summative rating in the top ten percent of all schools in the state. Commendable schools are below that top ten percent, but above the lowest five percent, and do not have any underperforming student groups. Targeted support schools' summative scores again fall within that same range of being below the top ten percent and above the lowest five percent. But what makes them targeted is that they have at least one student group whose summative score falls below that five percent of schools. Note that it is also specified that the student group must have at least twenty students included in order to be counted as a student group within the school. And it's also important to note that these designations are determined by a student's home school, not their serving school. So keeping all this in mind, I wanted to share that with the official state report card release on October thirtieth, we as a district had two schools, Forest and Aricoy Community School, receive an exemplary designation. In addition, North Elementary received a designation of targeted support for the student group of students with disabilities. Again, it is important to note here that since those ratings are determined by home school, many of the students who are identified as special education students may not even attend North. Because of this, it is really a collective responsibility of the district to continue to support and meet the needs of all students. You might remember that last year Orchard Place also had the designation of targeted, but this year they are now in a commendable rating, along with all the other schools in the district, aside from three previously mentioned, Forest, Aricoy, and North. As I mentioned, there are many indicators that go into determining a school's overall summative designation. We are going to take a closer look at some of those academic indicators to see how our students are performing through this team. We will be specifically looking at the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the Illinois Science Assessment, Access for ELs, and the Dynamic Learning Maps. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Amy Senkall, who will share more about two of these assessments.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Amade. Tonight, I will be sharing our performance on both the Illinois Assessment for Readiness and the Illinois Science Assessment, as Ms. Bowman mentioned. We are going to start by looking at IAR, and as you know, this assessment is given annually to all of our students in the district from third through eighth grade. It measures students' level of proficiency of grade level standards in both ELA, which includes reading and writing, and math, and those results are reported in the percentage of students who met or exceeded those expectations. So we're going to begin by looking at ELA, and just for your reference, the green represents District 62 and the blue is the state of Illinois. So as you can see, we have seen some very consistent, steady growth over the past few years. This year, fifty-one point one percent of our students were meeting or exceeding grade level standards, up from forty-six point two percent, and we're also outperforming the state by about ten percentage points overall. Next, you're going to see these same scores, they are broken down by grade level, and again, you can see that we are above the state at every grade level, and as we see in our overall data, apart from just a little dip in seventh grade, we are seeing a steady increase in achievement at each grade level. All right, we have also broken down our ELA performance by student group. While achievement gaps still do exist, especially with our students with IEPs and our multilingual learners, our students are still outperforming the state in almost every single category. All right, we'll move on to math. I will provide a summary, so you do not have to have all this memorized right now at the very end, too. All right, and again, for math, we see some steady growth here in math, not quite as much as in ELA, but we are still growing and we are still significantly above the state, over ninety percentage points for math. We've also broken down this data, just as we did in ELA, by grade level. We do see higher performance in third grade and in seventh grade, which is typical and does match what we're seeing at the state level as well. We did see a slight decline in performance from third to sixth grade, which we are going to be digging into a little bit, and I'll share some next steps with you at the end of our presentation today. And finally, we've disaggregated this data by student group. As you can see, again, we are outperforming the state in almost every area. We have also improved in each of these areas, but we do acknowledge that those opportunity gaps still exist, especially with our students with IEPs and our multilingual learners, and this is definite area of focus for us moving forward. All right, now we will move on to science. Again, the science is administered annually to our third and fifth, I'm sorry, our fifth and eighth grade students each year, and it measures proficiency in science content and writing, and these results are reported by the percent of students who are proficient or exemplary. So as, the same with our ELA and math data, we are again seeing a steady increase in the percentage of students who are meeting proficiency levels. This year, sixty-one point one percent of our students were either proficient or exemplary in science. Just as we did with IAR, we've broken down this information by grade level, and as you can see, excuse me, more of our eighth graders are at that proficient or exemplary level, and this really just tells us that the more time and the more engagement our students have with this content, the more proficient they become. And lastly, we did take a look at our performance of our student groups as we did with IAR. You will again see that we are higher than the state in almost every category. However, we want to be sure that all of our students are performing at high levels, so we are continuing to look at those opportunity gaps. I know I've just given you a whole lot of information. At the end of our presentation, we're going to provide just a brief summary as well as our plans to support continued growth going forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Libby Jaskiewicz, who will speak more about our multilingual learners and their performance on this year's access test.
Good evening. Before we start, I wanted to take a moment to highlight a significant shift that we've made with our terminology. We as a district have made the intentional decision to move from English learner or second language learner to multilingual learner. We feel this term has a more asset-based focus, and it really places the value and importance of the students' native language and English. It also celebrates that many of our students are learning and growing in multiple languages and not just two. This is a positive shift for our students and families, and one that we are really proud of. But I'm here to share data on the access assessment from twenty-three, twenty-four. As a reminder, ACCESS is the yearly state assessment for students that are identified as multilingual learners from kindergarten through eighth grade. This assessment is designed to demonstrate how our multilingual students are progressing with their English language development in all domains of language. So I'd like to start with an overview of our multilingual population. In District 62, we have seen a steady increase in our multilingual group for the past several years. As you can see by the green columns on the slide, our population has increased significantly since 2022, and this is a trend that's reflected in the state data as well. I would also like to point out that the total number represented here consists of many new-to-the-country students. We have seen a significant increase in newcomers. In 2022, our number of newcomers in the district was a hundred thirty-two. In 2023, that number rose to four hundred six, and in 2024, that number was four hundred eighty-two. A newcomer is defined in the state of Illinois as a student who's born outside the United States or Puerto Rico and is within their first three years in this country. You can also see from this chart that our district multilingual population is more than two and a half times the average of what is typical in the state of Illinois. One of the things that we looked at on the report card is progress towards proficiency. This is a formula from the Illinois State Board of Education that requires multilingual students to meet English language proficiency targets within five years of receiving multilingual services. Students have a baseline year and then are given the five years to meet proficiency exit criteria. The state's identified this five-year goal based on research that shows that it takes students five to seven years to acquire a new language and become fluent. Basic conversational English typically develops more quickly than cognitive academic language, and ACCESS, this assessment that we give, is assessing that academic language piece. This chart shows us the percentage of students who are on track to meet that five-year goal. Many of our District 62 students actually meet their proficiency levels before the five-year deadline. Right now, you'll notice there are no blue columns, the state is not sharing comparison data, but we felt it was important to highlight as part of the overall report card. While there is a small decline in scores for our district students, I am happy to report that our numbers have stayed relatively steady, especially when you consider the increase in new-to-the-country students within this group. Again, a hundred thirty-two newcomers in 2022 to four hundred eighty-two newcomers in 2024. And again, even with that large increase, we are still almost double the state average in terms of students meeting the identified proficiency target, so we have eleven point six percent of our students exit our multilingual program. And I would like to point out that while we saw a need in our limited English proficient population on IAR, we have started tracking our former EL data, and this former EL group is a group of students who meet exit criteria on ACCESS, meaning that they're proficient in English. And while the state isn't sharing results for this group yet, what we're seeing with our District 62 data is that our multilingual students who have exited the multilingual program are actually outperforming their monolingual peers across IAR, and in particular with ELA. And so while we still have work to do, we did just want to take a minute to highlight that aspect of our data because we do think it is important. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. De Cristofaro, who's going to share information on DLM.
All right, good evening. The Dynamic Learning Maps for DLM is an alternate assessment designed for third through eighth graders with the most significant cognitive disabilities. with the most significant cognitive disabilities. It assesses students on the essential elements, which are modified standards, grade-specific expectations. Eligibility for the DLM is determined by the IEP team when the team feels that the state assessment, even with accommodations, would not be appropriate. In order to be eligible, students need to have a disability that significantly impacts both their intellectual functioning and their adaptive behavior functioning. Student results are reported using four performance levels: emerging, approaching, at target, or advanced. This graph shows the percentage of students with IEPs in District 62 compared to the state average. As you can see, District 62 has had a higher percentage of students with IEPs. Although, over the last three years, you can see that that discrepancy has decreased. And currently, sixteen point three percent of our population has an IEP compared to the state average of sixteen. It's a very small percentage of students of our population who are eligible to take DLM. So as you can see here, in 2024, out of our seven hundred and twenty-five students who have IEPs, only thirty-seven students overall were eligible to take DLM. The state actually suggests that one percent or less of students eligible to participate in state testing should be eligible to take the DLM. Moving on to our ELA data, this chart represents our results over the last three years. Most of the students who participated in 2024 demonstrated emerging understanding and ability to apply content knowledge in ELA. When comparing the DLM results to the state average, we do have fewer students whose results were at target or advanced, and more students in the emerging category. It is important to note that in District 62, we do push our students to take the IAR if they are ready, and if we have students who are demonstrating that they are performing at target or at the advanced category. So that would be something the IEP team would consider. In math, most District 62 students also demonstrated emerging skills. We did have a slight increase from 2023 to 2024 in students who were approaching or at target. Similar to our ELA results when comparing our DLM results to the state average, we did have fewer students who were at target or advanced, and more students in the emerging category. Moving on to science, the science assessment was only given to fifth and eighth grade students who are eligible for DLM, so it was a very small sample size. And you can see here that all of the students who did participate in the science assessment received an emerging score. So do want to point out that our DLM performance is something that we are looking at very closely across all domains, ELA, math, and science. And our teachers in our ALS program, where most of our students participate in the DLM, do have new curriculum resources this year that support instruction towards the essential elements. We also plan to complete a closer analysis of our DLM data to identify which essential elements we want to target for future instruction. And the special ed program review, we hope, will be helpful in making some recommendations so that we can look at this further. So now I will turn it back to Ms. Endam for summary and next steps.
All right, I know we've just provided you a lot of information, so allow me to just take a minute to summarize and highlight our strengths, our growth opportunities, and our next steps. So overall, we're feeling really pretty good about our data. We've seen continued growth in all areas, particularly in ELA. This is great news, and we can attribute a lot of this to our focus on high-impact routines in literacy and on our focus in writing in middle school ELA. We are also significantly above the state in almost every single area. And as Ms. Jaskowicz shared, our multilingual learners are meeting proficiency on ACCESS at twice the rate of the state. And the majority of our multilingual learners are on track to meet those progress towards proficiency targets, which is really a huge celebration, especially considering our change in our demographic over the last couple of years. Additionally, as Ms. Jaskowicz says, we are seeing that once our students do meet those proficiency targets, they are actually outperforming our monolingual students. So that's pretty exciting as well, and it really can be attributed to the hard work of our staff and our students. And while we see plenty to celebrate in our data, we also recognize that we do have some opportunities for growth as well. For one, though overall achievement is increasing on IAR and on ISA, we want to see more accelerated growth for all of our students. We also continue to see opportunity gaps in both ELA, math, and science that need to be addressed. We are also not seeing quite as much growth in math as we are in ELA, especially from third to sixth grade. So that is definitely something we will be digging into a little bit more. And finally, as Ms. Jaskowicz shared, we've seen a significant increase in the number of new-to-the-country students here in District 62. So we need to continue to monitor and address those needs as well. Now, the good news is, we've already begun and been hard at work to address some of these areas. For one, we have been working with consultants to engage in a review of both our special education and our multilingual programming. We have new resources for our students with IEPs and our new-to-the-country students. We are continuing to focus on co-planning and co-teaching that supports the needs of all students. Individual school improvement plans, you will see this year, have also included specific steps to address those opportunity gaps that we talked about earlier. We also know that the better equipped, trained, and supported our staff are, the more they're able to help our students. So we are really focused on ensuring that the professional development we're providing is relevant, meaningful, and targeted. So just a few examples of some of the things we're doing in those areas. We're providing in-depth literacy training, known as letters, for our instructional coaches and our reading specialists. We have a focus on student engagement and critical thinking in middle school math, science, and social studies. And we are starting math recovery training to help teachers really understand the progression of skill development in math. And lastly, we've been working on expanding our menu of options for interventions in both math and reading this year. And this will really just help ensure that our students get the targeted support that they need. We have work ahead of us, no doubt, but we are feeling pleased about the progress that we've made so far and the direction that we're headed. And again, we're really proud of the work of our teachers and our students. So that concludes our presentation. And at this point, I would like to open it up to the board if you have any questions for our team.
I have two comments and a question.
Sure.
Sorry. I just really wanted to celebrate the achievement of our multilingual learners. I think, wow, I don't know what else to say. I think everything's been going wonderful based on the data you've just shown us. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm sure our students and families, thank you as well. I also want to applaud the thought about raising math scores with building big classrooms, as one thing you can say on your slide. But I think it's really cool that we're not just throwing a curriculum at staff, that we're thinking about being creative about how we can better help our students think about math and think critically. I think that's really important, and so, correct. My question is, Ms. Nagal, you had mentioned for ISA, there's, I'm sorry, for IAR, there's a typical third and seventh grade bump in math. Why is that typical?
That's just what we see over the years. When you look back at our data, there is usually a higher percentage of students who are meeting those standards in third and seventh grade. And that is consistent with what we're seeing at the state level as well. Could be the content on the assessment, could be the level of complexity, but that is a trend that we are seeing.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I just want to add that changing it to multilingual learners was so thoughtful, because I didn't ever think about it, but once I saw that and I thought, English second language, it just automatically has a negative connotation to it. So I really appreciate that, guys.
Thank you. That is something we're really trying to flip the script there a bit this year. In our district as a whole, we've been talking a lot about really the importance of using asset-based language when we're talking about our children.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
How many years have we given IAR?
How many years have we, wow, let's see. When did we move from Park to IAR?
Considering you're thinking Park. They've moved to eleven years.
This is what Park. Remember, it was Park, and then Park became IAR, which is very similar.
That's a test that's a lot of years. But that's a test you can compare against each other?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then I just wanted to ask again about the sending, the homeschool versus where they're getting their services? So if you, your homeschool is Cumberland, but you are sent to Forest, Cumberland still gets those results?
That is correct.
And added on to their data?
That is correct.
Okay. And that's how the state wants it?
That is correct, yes. That's how the state reports that information for us.
Okay, it's illogical.
Thank you.
Of course.
Question for you on the ACCESS testing, or on our results, because they're specific results. So we were explaining that over the three years, or that they want the assessment over the three years. And it's students who have been in the country, that's what it is, for three years.
A newcomer is defined, yes.
So for our numbers, that would indicate that the majority of our students have been in the country less than two years or less. Right? Because of the growth of our numbers?
So we're at about nineteen hundred ELs. And again, last year, you know, around four eighty are new-to-the-country students. So it is a big impact in our population, but it still is not a majority. So we do have students that were born here that are still identified as multilingual learners. They come from homes that are multilingual. So it is, it is a combination of students.
So is it truly blended?
It really is.
That's good to know.
It's just been a shift in demographics. As a district, we have not had as many new-to-the-country students. You know, for many years, we hovered around forty across the district. And so, you know, to really be close to five hundred now is a big shift. And it has really, you know, had us in thinking and planning and responding to those needs.
So in that case, definitely applaud the numbers in that arena.
Yeah, really, that's amazing.
When you really think about that growth in numbers, it's incredible to be able to have that much growth in that short of a period of time with that specific group of students. So that's amazing.
And I assume we have to thank you guys for making sure to staff people that spoke the proper languages.
That is definitely, that goes to Ms. Kathleen Kelly Colgan, too. It's definitely worked in all of our principals. The state of Illinois does have a lot of laws around when you get to a group of twenty in a, in a building, you become a TBE group. So you have to have someone certified. And so we have had, you know, a lot of fun looking for and hiring, and have found some wonderful people that speak Russian, that speak Ukrainian. We have many languages, especially in particular in North. We have teachers that are certified in multiple languages there for the needs. Yeah.
That's a funny joke my husband told him. I'll tell you this later. They laugh at us all the time. One more thing, real quick. So, and then the Asian student, the shift in the testing between the Asian student grouping, that was really concerning.
So part of that is, though, that a lot of our students that are coming right now, that are newcomers, are coming from Russia and Pakistan, and they are identifying as Asian.
That is why.
And so, you know, they are new to the country. They are still taking IAR like other students. And so that is what we are assuming has accounted for that decrease a little bit. We have many new-to-the-country students in that population right now.
Does the state give any consideration, do you think? This is a complete opinion. For this amount of stress it puts on those students, they're new to this country, they're being, they're new to this school, they're new to the community, and they're being asked to take these assessment tests. It seems that that puts another stress on the students.
And, you know, when you think in terms of students coming and being identified as multilingual, there's a screener for that, that they take IAR, they take ACCESS. It really does add some extra pieces to that. We do a lot of advocacy for those pieces. I reach out to people, you know, at the Illinois State Board of Education. I think a lot of their response has been that it is at least baseline data and does help us monitor students. You know, they should be also working towards the same standards. And so we do want to have a pulse on how they're doing. And so I definitely see both sides of it.
I see both sides, but maybe not the first year they're in the country.
They're also making these children take it in English. Which is, yeah, it's not, they're not presenting any of these tests in other languages. You can get some reclassification corrections, but, yeah. Content, yeah. And I think that's why the former group is something that we are starting to monitor, because once our students, again, once they're showing that they're proficient in English, their IAR scores are higher than students who can speak one language. Which, again, the benefits of being bilingual are showing up. Absolutely, yes.
Thanks. So then for the chronic absenteeism going up, do we think that's, I think I know this answer. I just want to put it out there. It's because people come into our community, and then they move on to their forever community or a different community after they've been. Like, why is our chronic, I guess, why is our chronic absenteeism? I don't feel like you guys have the right teams to bring that up.
I think that's a different statistic, right? She's talking about a different statistic.
You're talking about the, for our chronic absenteeism.
That's different. What is the definition of chronic absenteeism?
Yeah. We can get back to you on that if.
Yeah, just go on the Friday.
It's ten percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Ten percent of school days more are missing.
But that's different than moving in and out of the district.[1588.81]
Correct.
Yeah, it's different.
Oh, I thought.
Those are two different.
Yeah, I thought part of it was that they moved and that they don't tell us, so then it goes into chronic absenteeism. So that's not true at all?
No.
Okay.
Students who've missed more than ten percent of the school year are considered chronically absent. Whether or not there is an excused absence or a, or not.
Okay. So yeah, Dr. Amade, if you can get us some information on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is board development, school finance.
Oh, so I got it.
Board development, school finance.
And I will pass it over to Mr. Verlosi.
Good evening. So I always find on a cold rainy night, there's nothing better than a warm heart and some, some fabulous presentations. Why'd you stand up here, kind of comes out of me, sorry about that. But one of the things I know that the boards have been talking about for a while, we've been talking a lot about money the last couple of months. Levy, budget, whatnot. And I think there was a request made, uh, two months ago, three months ago, about a presentation, just about sort of go through school finance. So put this together, spent some time thinking about it, and did talk with the, get some feedback from the board members, and of course, Dr. Amade, and I talked about it. And of course, as I put it together, there's always things like, oh, I wish I had talked about that, or I wish I had talked about this, because you can kind of go on for a while. So in the interest of brevity and, and what's kind of most pertinent, I think this, this presentation probably sums it all. So just an overview, and these are some of these things I know that the board is probably aware of, a number of things I'm going to mention, but there may be people watching who aren't, so I do apologize if there's some redundancy and overlap. But one of the things that we always talk about, certainly fiscal year and calendar year. Many people in schools talk about the school year, which is always the middle of August to usually the beginning of June. And of course, we have other things we talk about, you know, summer school and whatnot that add on to that. But usually, most people think of the calendar year, January first, December thirty first. But for most of the reporting that we do, and I say most, because not all, I'm going to show something later tonight where I look at the calendar year, because I think it's a little bit easier to look at. We look at the fiscal year, which for us is July first through June thirtieth. And people who've been around long enough back in the nineties, the fiscal year used to actually start September first. So you go through August thirty first, which I'm glad I wasn't around for that change. But, and so we've been this way since sometime in the nineteen nineties. There is a schedule, it's, every year this really doesn't very much, so things get moved around month to month, these finance things generally don't. So every January, there's always a resolution that the board approves, giving me the permission and then all the folks that I work with to begin preparing the budget for the next fiscal year. And then through the course of the winter and spring into the summer, we begin putting things together, start making some assumptions, start talking to other departments to gather what their needs are, and kind of come up with a plan and put some information together and come up with a budget, which we always present the tentative budget in August, and then we always adopt the final budget in September. Because that's always, always due.
How many days have to be in between, sir?
There are always thirty days. So I know Dr. Amade asks me every year, like, why can't we, why do we have to move that meeting? And it's always, we have to have thirty days to post the tentative budget for the final. So that's why we always have the August meeting, usually the second Monday. Some years, depending on how the calendar falls, we can get away with, with not doing that. But most years, we have to, we have to do that. And then this month, November, we present the tentative levy, which we're going to talk about a little bit more in a few minutes. And then in December, we always adopt the levy. And it's our practice, we always have a truth and taxation hearing, we always do the public notice and whatnot. That's something that if you're over five percent more than where you were the previous year, when you, under ask, you're required to do it. And most years, given where CPI is a little higher, we have some new construction, we're usually over. This year, we didn't have that issue, but we do it anyways, just a matter of transparency and getting the information out. And in our case, I think it's a lot of good news. So those are things that we want to make, make people aware of. The Consumer Price Index, which some people use interchangeably with inflation, which is not a hundred percent true. But we won't go into the rabbit hole on that, but it's usually kind of a good way of really thinking about it. And the increase in the tax will be based on the Consumer Price Index from the previous year. So what happens is actually kind of two years when you think about it, because we're going to have the CPI that we're looking at for this month and the next month is actually from twenty twenty-three, calendar year twenty twenty-three, which is three point four percent. We're using that in our levy at the end of twenty twenty-four for dollars you're receiving in calendar year twenty twenty-five. Makes sense? Also that we can actually add on new construction or any expiring TIFs, which in our community is a big deal because we do have a lot of new developments, so there's always new construction dollars every year. And we've had a number of TIFs sort of roll off, including this year, which is a very small. But that actually adds on to, so whenever you have your increase, there's additional dollars you can capture beyond whatever the CPI increase may be. The levy, the, the percent that we actually levy represents the most that we can actually get over the prior year, is what that really represents. And I know I've had this, in all the years I've done this business, this job, people sometimes you put a number out, there's six percent, seven percent, people don't really know what that is. That is the very most that we can get, doesn't mean we're going to get it, we're still subject to property tax rules and limitations and PTAL. But that represents the most that we could get. And the percent levy is not, in that vein, is not the percentage of your home's value that you're paying in taxes. That's merely the increase over the prior year. I know some people, certainly not anyone in this room, but I do get those questions sometimes. And those are, it's not actually based on your home's value, and it's not the overall take of what your home is worth. And lastly, a tax cap county, which is, I think the board all knows, about half of the counties in Illinois are tax capped. And of course, all the populated counties are tax capped, so even though half the counties have the cap, about ninety-some odd percent of the population of Illinois lives in a tax capped county. And because we're tax capped, we're actually unaffected by the change of home values, which I haven't, I think I've told the story here. Many years ago, when the home values cratered in twenty, twenty oh seven, twenty oh eight, you know, I had friends asking me, and I should, I hate saying this because I was at a barbecue, people think I go to LAN parties, but, you know, Mark, home values are cratering, what are the schools going to do? It's like, well, we don't care, we're in a tax cap district. And of course, you don't want to go through all that minutia at a party, but largely, it doesn't really affect us so much. We're really looking at the CPI and any new construction. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute or so. Okay, this, I want to apologize in advance, this was perfect on my slide, and I, then I put it on the district template and somehow I didn't catch that part of the edge, kind of got knocked off on the last slide. But when you think about Consumer Price Index, equalized assessed value of property, and also the tax rate, there's a, there's a relation here. So if, and these triangles represent a CPI and the existing EAV. So if the EAV goes up by a certain amount in any given year, and your CPI is a certain amount, if they happen to be the same, the actual tax rate is what prints out on our property tax bills, and as it prints out on our agency report that we get from the Cook County Clerk, would be the same, it's unaffected if it goes up proportionally. If we have a case where CPI is higher than existing home values, like what we saw when home values were going down and we were getting three percent or whatever many years ago back in the late, they would call them the bonds, I think, correct? And the actual tax rate went up. And similarly, conversely, if the EAV is going up faster than CPI, which we have seen, and which happens in years where they do a triennial reassessment in Cook County. I've never seen them go down, they always go up, and they should go up by a pretty substantial amount. Usually greater than CPI, and they actually drive, it's this tax rate over here, that actually drives the tax rate down.
You said you've never seen it?
I, I have not. Whenever they do reassessment, it always goes up. Well, I shouldn't say that, there was, I, I think there was.
One year.
When they did it, when things were cratering, it did go down. It did go down, I should, about fifteen, twenty years ago, that happened. Also, the relationship between fund balance and the revenues and expenses. I know that we talk about this a lot in the conversation I've had with the members of the Board of Education. But our fund balance is the cumulative amount of money that we have on hand, which we usually keep invested through the Cook County, main township, rather, main township school treasurer. And the revenues and expenses that we have in any given year or month determine the amount by which the fund balance is increasing or decreasing, simple accounting. And you think of it as the beginning fund balance plus your revenues minus your expenses is your ending fund balance. So one of the things that we have here in District sixty-two is we do have a healthy fund balance. So, which is enabling us to not have a referendum to do full day kindergarten, because I know that's something that a lot of our neighbors have had to do. We're not in a position to ask for more money to be able to do that. So what we will see is, when we do this construction, we do a lot of this work, whatever dollar amount that happens to be, we will probably have planned deficits those fiscal years, because we're, we're expending all this money, doing all the buildings and expansion and whatnot. And our fund balance will go down, which we intend to do, and we will show a deficit, which will be a planned deficit and will not be an operational deficit as we're doing this, it's really sort of a one-shot deal. Where we're doing the building that may happen, happen over the course of one or two fiscal years. But operationally, we want to make sure that we stay in the black regularly. This is a chart that really shows revenues by source, and this kind of gets to the importance of the tax levy. But our district, we get about eighty-four percent of our revenues come from local sources. And we get about nine point four from the state and about five point eight from the federal government. And this chart looks a little bit more historically normal. We did have, and this is fiscal year twenty twenty-four, this is what we have, if you look at prior years, we had the Esther funding, we had a lot of the Esther funding. The federal portion would have been a little bit larger. And this breakout is very typical for most suburban city districts. You do see some districts where there's a greater percentage of the funding that may come from the state and federal government. There are districts that may get half of their funding from those sources. Think of CPS, maybe there's some districts downstate where that's the case. And then there are also districts where they're well over ninety percent from local sources, kind of think of some of the districts you might see on the North Shore. But for those of us living in the suburbs, the overwhelming majority of us have breakout very similar to this. And every district I've worked at, all these have been the same within a percent or two, so there's really not a whole lot of, a whole lot of difference. One of the things I want to talk about, revenues and expenses, one of the things that I would have added if I had thought about this sooner is I keep adding things on. We are the administrative agent for North Cook, for the Regional Service Center. They reside within our district, so that's why we're their administrative agent. So we, although we keep separate books from them, we still, we still do their, their receivables and their payables, we still run their checks and whatnot. So, and we run their payroll. So those are things that when we do the board packet, which is why when we have all the bills, there's always sort of two, two files instead of one, because some are ours and then others are for, for North Cook. So that's something that we, it does cause a lot of extra work for us, although North Cook is a great partner and they do a lot of good things for us. But that does cause, I know in the packet and a lot of the things that you may see in the postings and whatnot, there is a lot of duplication. And it is for that reason.
And sometimes, aren't they listed as D sixty-one?
They, yeah, D sixty-one.
For the clarity for the board, if some of them do check, or else North Cook I S C.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we are reimbursed?
Well, they have their own balance, so that money comes from, that, that handles through the, is handled through the Cook County Treasurer. So even though we're handling the paperwork, they have their own balance and whatnot, and then they do pay us.
Right.
For that service, correct?
Those are mine, people to be aware. Like on this month, there is like a hundred and three thousand dollar payment to D sixty-two, is that reimbursement for this then?
Well, I'm actually looking at it, it could be, it could be that, it could be reimbursement to D sixty-two, could be from another district in special, I'd have to.
Oh, for our intergovernmental agreement?
I, I'd definitely look at it.
So it could be, it could be intermentally, some agreement payments and.
I don't think, they don't reimburse us for anything, they pay us for services that we give them.
Oh, that's correct, yeah, that's exactly right.
So just the word, I mean.
Right, so, but it does show up, we, we, we show all of their transactions, they're not out of our balance, they have their own account. That's correct.
So, yeah.
I think the one that Tina's referring to is definitely probably a special education reimbursement, so that.
Yeah, I was referring.
Like an intergovernmental agreement, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, that would make sense.
This is such a large amount, I was just confused.
So a little bit about the importance of the tax levy, is we get most of our revenues from the levy. Most school districts receive most of their funds from the property tax levies, we talked about a few minutes ago. And unlike other taxing bodies, school districts really get a lot of their funding from that. Our friends at the Park District do the levy, they get a good chunk of their revenues from the levy, but it's not, I don't know what the exact breakout is, but they also are able to generate revenues through fees and, and people signing up for services or programs or whatnot. And they're able to generate revenues from that, whereas the fees that we charge against what we actually spend operating are very, very miniscule. And the city has a lot of other avenues, they can assess a sales tax. We used to have the city stickers on our cars, which we don't have anymore, you know, there's other things that they can do to, to generate revenue, which we don't have. So that's one thing we always see in the paper. You know, if, if another taxing body says, yeah, we don't really need the levy, well, to them, it's not as important as it would be to us as a school district. And that's typical in every community you're really can find in the area. So another thing, we did abate, we are going to abate, and we'll talk a lot about this later, five million dollars roughly between last fiscal year and this fiscal year off the levy, by under levying out of our operating funds. Able to do that because we're retiring all of our debt as of December first. So that is good news for us and I have celebrations. Mrs. Boba kicked us off with that, we're going to continue, we're going to talk about, about financial celebration. A little bit about grant funding. Most of our, our state funds come from evidence-based funding. So I'm going to kind of go into the wayback machine for those of us who've been around for a while, state funding, before we had EBF, right? There used to be sort of two components. There was the foundation funding, which was the, was it six thousand nineteen dollars per student or whatever it was? And that was a certain portion of the funding. And then there was a poverty portion too, which oftentimes could be larger than your, your foundation funding, depending on the district. And that really was your funding. When they created EBF, they wanted to put tier funding in, in, into the equation, where they held people harmless, so the money that you were getting off of the old poverty and foundation levels you were going to receive, and then they would add to that tier funding every year based upon what tier you're in. And we are in tier four. So our, our state revenues would go up by about five thousand dollars a year because we're tier four. If we were tier three, it would probably go up, a district our size might be close to a hundred thousand dollars. If we were tier two, it might be closer to three hundred thousand dollars, and if we were tier one, it'd be quite a bit more than that. So that was a way for the state to be able to fund, when they add money just for, for education, was a way of funneling the, the money to schools that needed them the most. So some of the state funding does come through bilingual programs, and which I know Ms. Jessica Woods talked about a few minutes ago. And there's also transportation reimbursement and the personal property replacement tax. So there is funding, I always call CPPRT, state funding, if you look in our books, they count it as local. I always say it comes from the state, we have no control over it, so I like to call that state funding. And, but that is something that they always consider local. But I always think it was money coming from the state and you don't have a whole lot of control over it. Most federal funding is received through the title funds and also some special fund funding, which is that portion there. And the grants that we have in District sixty-two are managed by the individual departments that oversee them, they're not managed by the business office. So the bilingual department manages the bilingual grants, curriculum manages the title money, the title one money and whatnot. So the people that are really in special handles, idea funding, so the people that are really sort of roots on the ground, so to speak, knowing what we're buying and what supplies we may have or need, and who's doing what are the folks that actually manage the grants. So I know this is really exciting, and I always have to try to put some jokes in here to, to light things up. But for those who haven't had enough and would like more, we have, we have some PD opportunities coming up later this week, so this is quite timely. The triple I conference is, is this end of the season, this weekend. There are, there are many, many, many sessions you can go to, most of them are not dealing with school finance, but there are a few good ones. So there is on Saturday at ten thirty, there is TIF one oh one, we'll move out TIFs work and the background school funding, which I know is hosted by Aris Dalianis, whom we work with at Franz, that can house a lot of our tax interventions. And also I know some of the board members probably know Bill Harrison from, we like longtime board member, longtime member of Ed Red. I think he's on that community too, very nice man. Aris is nice too, but I'm sure they're, they're all quite nice. Also at one thirty, there is demystifying school district tax levies, so there's a little bit more about what that may all be. So there are, I think there's one or two others in there, so you can, if you're interested in more, there are, there are opportunities available.
Is there a test at the end of this for all the people in the room?
Yeah, it's, it is in English too, but there's a lot of numbers, a lot of numbers.
No, we got it, it's in math.
It's in, it's in math.
Anybody that takes those classes, let me know and I will call you every half hour to keep you awake.
Any questions from the board?
Any, any, any questions or thoughts about?
Thank you for doing this.
Great.
That's great.
All of us aside, I appreciate you taking the time to put this together for us. We're about to spend a lot of money for fully kindergarten and all of the projects we have coming up. And so I think it's really important that we as a board fully understand the finances and what's coming in and out and that the community understands that we have, and that we do not need a referendum to do any of the work we're going to get to do. And that's very, very exciting, and that's due to years and years of good fiscal management. And so congrats to everybody on that. So thank you very much, Mr. Verlosi.
Well, thank you.
Yes, definitely.
Count it, can we add this to the new school board member packet?
Yes.
This would be huge for.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Since this was so thrilling, next up is estimated levy resolution for twenty twenty-four.
And back to Mr. Verlosi.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mas, so maybe I should put the laser pointer away, hold on, I have a mechanical pencil. This is the, the night where we, as we mentioned earlier, as we do every year, we always present and talk about the tentative tax levy. Last year, at the board's direction, we did levy eighty-seven million four hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, which is a two point nine percent increase over the prior year, and we intentionally under-levered out our operating funds as we're retiring our debts, which we've been talking about. And this year, or actually last year, calendar year twenty twenty-three, CPI was three point four percent for our purposes. And it was a new construction, and the small TIF number five that Lee and Perry, that really small TIF that was by where TIF, where TIF one used to be is, is expiring as well. We would probably get about four percent. So the board is, we've been talking about this last in a couple of weeks and actually probably months, looking at increasing our levy one point five percent this year over last year. So we're going to go from the eighty-seven million five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to eighty-eight million eight hundred fifty-one thousand dollars is what we will levy, which is all documentation. So this year, we're going to under-levy intentionally by about two point one million dollars. Last year, it was two point eight million dollars. So we will, of course, in the two years, have under-levered, in a sense, abated about five million dollars to our taxpayers. So there will be a public hearing, although we are not required to do that because we're under the five percent, that is our, our history and that's what we, we do. We will put the posting in the paper and we will have a public hearing. the posting in the paper, and we will have a public hearing before prior to the December board meeting, there is all, and I will deliver, make sure that the county clerk gets all this before the end of December when it's due, and there is a new law that we had to post on the website with the hearing notice, and again, the law, as it was written, is thirty days, really counting our school board meetings, so I did have to put the notice up a few days before prior to this, this meeting, but we will have it all posted, ready to go, and asking for approval, tentative order from the Board of Education, and also authority to do the posting in the, in the paper. Any questions at all?
I move that the board approve the resolution regarding the estimated tax amounts as follows: educational purposes, sixty-six million four hundred fifty thousand dollars; special education purposes, four million three hundred thousand dollars; toward community purposes, one million dollars; operations and maintenance purposes, nine million nine hundred thousand dollars; transportation purposes, three million seven hundred thousand dollars; I M R F purposes, seven hundred thousand dollars; social security purposes, one million eight hundred thousand dollars; life safety purposes, one thousand dollars; working cash purposes, one million dollars; debt service purposes, zero dollars; there is no debt service levy as all district bonds will be retired as of December first, for a total of eighty-eight million eight hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, and authorize the administration to publish the public hearing notice.
It's been moved in second, can we have a roll call, please?
Garrett?
Aye.
Herring?
Aye.
Massa?
Aye.
Morley?
Aye.
Weller?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Duckman?
Aye.
Next up is approval of student fee recommendations, Mrs. Massa again.
Back to you, Mr. Berlowski.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Massa, so I, I always struggle with this one every year, because here we are in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, although we're still in calendar year twenty twenty-four, and we're talking about student fees for fiscal year twenty twenty-six or school year twenty twenty-six, so the, the numbers keep getting larger on us, and the years kind of fly by, but anyway, looking at student fees, which you every year this time, in, in November, really recommending to keep student fees the same as they have been the prior, this year, and they have been the last number of years, we do, lunch fees we always look at separately when we wind up doing the renewal with our food service company, this is really transportation fee, registration fees, activity fees and whatnot, but looking for direction and approval on that tonight, and we can go ahead and begin putting that in our, our documentation for the next school year. Any questions at all?
No.
I move that the board adopt the student fee schedule for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, can we have a roll call, please?
Herring?
Aye.
Massa?
Aye.
Morley?
Aye.
Weller?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Duckman?
Aye.
Garrett?
Aye.
Next up is three-year facilities project outlook, we're tired of Mrs. Massa and Mrs. Morley.
Yes, I like this subject because it makes me feel better about all the expenses I have coming up in my one hundred-year-old house. Christopher Berlowski.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Morley, so just when you were thought with numbers, I thought we were through with that, and we're gonna kind of go back and sort of finish off strong here, so every year, this is at the November board meeting, we always present a three-year facility outlook, that's something that Mr. Valander and I spent some time thinking about, talking about, and in prior years, we've always listed things that we're gonna be doing, from our point of view, things like roofs, tuck pointing, parking lots, things of that nature, we've kept some of the bigger stuff that we were doing with White, when they were our architect, kind of out, because we didn't have a scope of work or kind of a dollar amount that we really could kind of use to kind of go forward with, so this year, we kind of did what we've always been doing, and Adam, you could be so kind to project that, that'd be great, we did, thank you, Mr. Denneberg, we did add on full-day kindergarten for the next two calendar years, we show this in calendar years because fiscal year ends June thirtieth, and we're always doing work over the summer, so I like to do this sort of in calendar year terms, and we may in fact, we started to do things for next summer, so that's gonna probably happen in the next month or two, so I always like to call it calendar year, so calendar year twenty twenty-five, but we did put sort of full-day kindergarten and any related projects to that, which is district-wide, we sort of listed that, and in addition, as I mentioned before, we do have roof restoration at Ericoi, installation of our playgrounds, sidewalks at a couple of our schools, the demolition of the Catholic Charities property, the admin building basement renovation, looking to probably do the area up here, at least to reclaim the classrooms and sort of work on that, and also doing our security improvements, and things like tuck pointing and whatnot, which are routine maintenance, and although our schools, we don't have any, they're a hundred years old, they are certainly at the age where they require, as most suburban schools are, most of them are both in fifties or sixties, they're in quite a lot of maintenance, so one of the things that we did is, Mr. Valander and I, we talked about this, we kind of thought about the things that we're going to do, which is, we can sort of estimate, but the sort of wild card is how much is fully kindergarten-related projects, and how much is actually we done this year, and we are still sort of working with S T R Architects and Pepper, our new construction firm, sort of really defining the scope of work, but we always used to put a number down, and we kind of put a range of six to nine million dollars, depending on kind of what we actually get done this year, and how we sort of spec things out, we think that's a reasonable amount of money, and we think that's probably a good amount to, you know, probably a little on the higher end maybe, but something that would probably be inclusive of whatever we would need to do with this coming summer. And then, Mr. Denneberg, can you scroll up a little bit? And then in calendar year twenty twenty-six, that obviously, we want to be live at all of our schools with fully kindergarten in August of twenty twenty-six or fully kindergarten, and to that end, there's gonna be a lot, probably a lot more work done in calendar year twenty twenty-six, so we'll be doing things like the roof restoration at Chippewa, doing some paving seal coating, the parking lot and sidewalk at North School, and again, we want to be strategic about when we do that, if we're gonna be doing some building at North School, we want to make sure the building's done before we actually wind up doing the parking lot, so that, things can move around, that's why I call this the outlook, based upon conditions of things, if something were to be in better shape than we realized, or tolding up better, or something's not in as good a shape, things can move around a little bit on this list, but we do have some boiler replacements covered with Chippewa, again, security improvements and whatnot, and the ongoing tuck pointing. So, again, we're still defining the scope of work, we have a number from White, and Mr. Valander and Dr. Ammann and I have talked a lot about kind of in our hearts where we think this is going to be, and we think we're gonna probably come with something less than that, so between the six and the nine million in calendar twenty twenty-five, we're gonna say twenty million, or a little bit more than that, could be twenty-two million or twenty-five million, depending on where we come in, but it was really kind of hard trying to nail down a number on this, just because we don't have scope of work selected, we don't really have a hard timeline yet, which is what we're working on, and we will have in a few months, and we also don't know where bidding's going to be, so we've gotten a few early words that bidding is starting to slow down, a little bit softer, so it'll be advantageous to us, but I don't know if that's going to continue, if that's gonna be that way next year or not, I don't know, so these numbers, if we get any clearer direction that's, that would substantially change these, of course, we're gonna communicate that, and a lot of it, and the big driver of all this, obviously, is gonna be the, the full-day kindergarten improvements. Did you go up, Mr. Denneberg, please? And then, calendar year twenty twenty-seven, by then, our full-day kindergarten should be implemented, up and running, and then we have, looking at some of the middle school renovations that we've been talking about as part of our strategic plan, we've got that listed, roof restoration, again, that's gonna be depending what we actually do determine through roof scans in terms of which, what roof or part of roof is pressing, the sidewalk and that parking lot will need to replace at Oakland, there will probably be some boiler work, and ongoing security improvements or whatnot, but these are things that obviously, if you get further out, things can sort of move around and be slotted, we're going to say probably twelve million plus, and the driver of that, usually when we down this, most of these numbers have been kind of four, or five, or six million in prior years, is gonna be basically the middle school renovations, so looking at those schools, really three schools, we need to make some of these improvements, and I think when you, I, I think when we get there, it's gonna be a few million dollars through this, it won't be as big as full-day kindergarten, as there are fewer schools involved, but I think that there's some real opportunity for some really transformative things to happen at our, at our middle schools down the road. So, any, any questions at all?
Yeah, hello, and I also would say to the board that we, we spent even this last Friday in like about an eight-hour meeting between cabinet planning with fully kindergarten, strategic plan, and then S T R and Pepper Construction for the evening or afternoon, the amount of, it's exciting work, it's homework, but, but what we have been super clear with, with our friends at Architects and Construction is that, you know, that we are going to be pushing and scrutinizing and really looking at dollars and decisions, so putting this in front of you now is the right month that we do it, but, and I think Mark and Mike have done a good job of trying to get to an estimated, you know, cost of what things might cost, but you still have to have a presentation, hear what our, what our thoughts are, you may push back on some things, you may want more information, so, you know, ballparking this right now, you know, Mark says maybe a little more than twenty million, I'm like, well, maybe a little less, I mean, so we're, we're, we're super conservative, but we also, we know this is the one time to get it right, and not just that, but there's other little things along the way, like spaces for our itinerant services, you know, pumping rooms, there's, there's things that should be in modern facilities, you know, it's, there's little things that, you know, once we have all that dialed in, and we're gonna do some work at each of the sites, we should consider, you know, that part of it may be some of this fluctuation, it's not just a full-day kindergarten solution, but it's also not just spend, 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 and fix everything, so we're encouraged to get to December, because we're gonna, I'll talk about this in my report briefly, about what you're gonna see in, in December at your board meeting, but to get a little bit further ahead here with, it's just nice to have partners that are hearing us and providing turnaround time quickly from the architects and the construction team, but also to have our cabinet team weighing in on programs, and where are we using space efficiently, working with our principals, because they know their buildings better than, you know, than anyone really, so there's a better dollar amount coming, but I think we had to give you something to look forward for three years, because with middle school, a lot of experience out there with our back spaces, with our, I mean, there's just the multiple areas of which we're looking to enhance, the unfunded mandate of fully kindergarten though is looming, and we want to try to get that solved, and with that's P D, with that is, you know, just a hiring, and there's a myriad of things at all at once, where I appreciate Mark's work and Mike's work with getting the estimate, but we know that that's gonna look more specific once we have something to share with the board, from, from architects, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's a very good point, Dr. Ammann, I would sort of, sort of add on to that, that when we go to approve these things, it's actually gonna be some single number that you're approving, which is, I know what we've got in the past, and there's actually, you'll be able to see when we do the bits specs, it'll be by, by trade or whatnot, or if there's certain things that are things that we said we were gonna do that we need to do, and then there's some things that you always, when you do these construction projects, you always can get some mission creep, but some of the things you do want to, while you're doing it, you do want to include that, as Dr. Ammann alluded to, be able to break that out and say, well, there's just some extra costs that we want to pick up, or there's other things that we may decide, yeah, we like that, but we don't like that now, maybe we'll look at that at a later date, so a lot of this is more, we talk about transparency, we talk about options, because I think it was part of the feeling of the Board of Education, and frankly, the administration as well, that we really didn't have that before, but we're gonna make sure that we have that now.
A menu of options.
Excellent.
I have a question, for these projects, for HVAC, for any building that we have to do, materials, where will materials be coming from, and how's that gonna impact the pricing?
Yeah, yeah.
The word not in the room is tariffs?
Yeah, just turned off my light for that one.
There is, that, that is a great question, some of the stuff is sourced from other countries that may, there could be some trade issues in the future, and, I mean, to that end, that could affect pricing, that also could affect lead time, so that is a consideration, so, you know, I think the full-day kindergarten work, we're probably in pretty good shape on, most of our, most of our buildings at least, and we're gonna talk more about this, I know, next month, and obviously, the coming months, we're gonna really have smart proposals and stuff, but I think each of our schools, we like a full-day kindergarten, most of the schools are really talking about just doing a buildup within the existing footprint of the school, so in terms of HVAC or whatnot, we probably can kind of work that with what we have, with minimal adjustments, there may be, you know, there may be two schools we really do have to add on to, let's say, and that may be more of an issue, but we'll, we'll see what happens when we come to it, and I think there is a, a session on what the election means for this educational funding at triple I as well, so there's, there are a few, there are a few good ones out there.
I mean, just something to keep in mind is plan, and maybe when you plan one thing over another, or?
Well, and I think there could be some offsetting factors, if there are some higher costs related to that, if, if the economy does slow down, which some of the, the early warning signs are kind of there, if that over the next year or two is a little softer, that may work to our advantage, so there may be some offsetting factors too, but you don't really know with these things, because we're having, I know other school districts knew, I think even the Park District had that, they were doing some building a couple of years ago, and you get out of COVID, and you think it's gonna cost X amount of dollars, and all of a sudden, it costs, you know, fifty, you know, the bid results are thirty percent higher, fifty percent higher.
Changes your course.
And you have to change the time you want to do this, you have to change the, the scope of work and whatnot, so flexibility will be the, the watchword for our district.
Looking at creativity.
We have things that are not negotiable, that we need to have, that we need to do, there's other things that we're just gonna have to roll the punches on, and, you know, that, that could in theory be something that slows us down in terms of completing a project, or does change the cost.
Think about where, how, how we get things, and, yeah, it's all these suitors in the hearing.
Any, any questions, more questions?
No.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, next up is approval of closed session minutes of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I move that the board approve the closed session minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four as presented. Second.
It's been moved in second, can we have a roll call, please?
Massa?
Aye.
Morley?
Aye.
Weller?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Duckman?
Aye.
Garrett?
Aye.
Herring?
Aye.
Next is consent agenda.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda items, which include approval of the revised personnel report, authorization of contract approvals, approval of minutes for the business meeting of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, District sixty-two net payroll for October, twenty twenty-four, District sixty-two warrant register and reported bills for October fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, November fifth, and twelfth, twenty twenty-four, monthly financial summary for October, twenty twenty-four, voided check register for October, twenty twenty-four, North Cook net payroll for October, twenty twenty-four, North Cook warrant register and reported bills for October fifteenth, thirtieth, thirty-first, and November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved in second, can we have a roll call, please?
Morley?
Aye.
Weller?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Duckman?
Aye.
Garrett?
Aye.
Herring?
Aye.
Massa?
Aye.
Next is communications, is anyone on the board have anything?
My family and I went to the Algonquin Steve Night last week, it was super fun, we made lava lamps, super fun, we had a great time, they had microscopes and mini habitats that we looked at, they had a digital escape room, they had the STEM club made mini golf, so it was really fun to see what the kids had made, and everybody could play mini golf with that, there was a tower challenge room, and then, broke my pen, in the art room, they were doing Lino stamps, which was really fun, and it was, it was a great night, we had a lot of fun, so thank you so much to the A M S staff for putting on such a great night for us, thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the book, for the kindergarten book, whoever worked on it, I love that it is multilingual, and it is there for everybody, so I appreciate that a lot.
District sixty-two Education Foundation held our, our first ever spelling meeting at the Display and Theater a couple of weeks ago, I, I don't know, yeah, it was after Halloween, so we had thirty participating students, I think we had thirty-four students sign up, we had about twenty-nine or thirty that were able to attend, there were competing events happening across the district that night, it was exciting, it was a lot of fun, the kids were really cheering each other on, the audience was great, participation was great, and the theater, doing it in the theater was, was a really nice touch, so we'll see if we'll be able to pull this again, that was a little bit low participation for cost-wise, so we're gonna look at maybe doing something different next year, or I don't know, we haven't had a meeting yet, so with that, Pizza Wars will be coming up, more details to come on that, as well as Trivial Night planning, so.
Favorite event for me.
What's that?
Pizza Wars, love it.
Or maybe Wing, Wing Wars.
Oh, yeah.
That would be good.
Anybody else?
I wanted to thank Mrs. Bova for helping me communicate to social workers, staff, families who are involved in the backpack program that comes through our food pantry closet to let them know that if a student gets backpacked, that family is also eligible to get food during the week from the pantry. And then for anybody who knows anybody else within our district who might need it, I have new contact at a mental health services organization in Glenview that has on staff somebody who can translate on Goldie.
I think that's it. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, President Burton. Not to, to put a finer point on it, but the, the student that won the spelling bee was Luke Scarborough, ICS sixth grader who spelled decibels. We're very proud of Luke. I'm sorry I missed it, but I won't miss the next one because that's how I'm allowed to use time. One effect that Display's Youth Commission, they sponsored a thousand dollars for the purchase of books written in Ukrainian and Russian dialects for students at North and I would see about for the middle schools, for the library. So encouraged to have that in place. We are, as you saw in the weekly update, starting special Olympics, our partnership in that. So I want to thank Dr. D. Cristofaro and her team for their push on that. I didn't see that coming and you guys helped me good, so we're excited to see that as part of our regular work here in the district. I don't want to jinx this, but I had a great call with Rivers Casino today on my hope to get funding for support in our inclusive, accessible playgrounds for Forest and Cumberland and maybe a partnership moving forward as Mr. Bertolozzi shared with Playgrounds Play Spaces and with the need for some new kindergarten play spaces at each of the sites or renovation. Maybe they can be our partner in that, you know, for the years to come, but I don't want to spoil it. I'm very proud of the work that we started with them, so. You do have full-day kindergarten presentation to look forward to at the next board meeting in conjunction with STR. I think we'll have our friend, at least one of the architects from STR here to give you a thirty thousand-foot view of what we're looking at and then to come back hopefully in January with some numbers and more specific. And we'll take some feedback from you at that meeting. You may have questions that we didn't anticipate, so we'll see. We also have our strategic plan update for the mid-year. Each of the team members here has been given a two-minute, was that a two-minute, one-minute? Oh, Miss Bova. One-minute limit on a five-minute video since we have five goal areas that will summarize the highlights of our strategic plan workup from beginning year till now, but then the memo will be extremely detailed that you will, I know, love to read on the weekend in part of time of leisure. But we have that to look forward to next meeting. We have four candidates for the next election here and once we have kind of, we'll look at that again today and then send confirmation to the board. And we do need to consider, and we don't have to do it today, but adding a special board meeting, I think it'll be for the fifth of May, to seat the members that win the election and any new members. So, and then at that time, to Ms. Morley's comment about, you know, what to add to the onboarding document, basically we'll, we'll consider adding Mark's, maybe not as in-depth, but we'll see how it goes, to that process for onboarding. Triple I Conference, looking forward to it with the board that's attending and that's this Friday and Saturday and Sunday. And, you know, you, you should have received a digital version, I believe. If not, I'll make sure it's sent today and I'll, I'll get you your, your main tags for the event as well today at the closed session when we leave. And then for student suspensions, we're a little lower than we were for the last month, but we did have three students out of AMS, two seventh graders providing, eighth grader for disruption, and then one student at CMS for safety and security violations and disruption through the internet. And then that's all I have there and I'm going to throw to Mr. Bertolozzi for a quick update with Pepper Construction Management. Unless there's questions, Mr. Moore.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what you were talking about with playground partnership? Who is that and what are they doing?
With Casino?
No, playground partnership, play spaces?
Oh, place, so, no, for like our, our inclusive, like the Forest Playground in the Cumberland, we've been, we're looking to enhance those spaces. We've already, you know, put together and asked the board for approval for both of those playgrounds, but what I've been asking for is for the casino, Rivers Casino, through their foundation.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that's everything. Have we talked to kids around the world yet about being able to reuse any parts of the playground that we dismantled? Because they will do the dismantling, they will use them in places all over the world.
We will.
Kids, kids around the world.
Basically, I think what we're doing with the inclusive playgrounds, I don't think there's a whole lot that we're actually getting rid of. It's really an addition at this point, so, but yeah, we'll keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Yeah, something's going to be not used again, we'll definitely, yeah. Sorry, I, I know, now I know where you're going.
So as I think we, we mentioned, I think we did mention this last month and I know I've mentioned it in the conversations with a few of the board members, we worked really hard to locate a new construction management company. And Pepper is the, Pepper Construction on Barrington is the company that we're going to go with. They're very highly recommended, they're very well thought of, they've done a lot of great work, including at Maintenance of Two Oh Seven. So we are still working on the contract with them. We hope to get it at the December board meeting, but the construction management contract looks a lot like the architect contract and it's rather lengthy, so we're actually having forensic kind of work on it with us. So we will get that up for approval since we can. But Pepper is in the meetings with us and they're hearing what we're doing and we're getting everybody up to speed, so we don't want to lose any, any time or, anyhow, this is a little something anyway.
Thank you.
New Township Treasurer submitted a report of October twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. There were seven new investments last month totaling two point six two five million, so that's two million, six seven twenty-five thousand dollars, and the weighted average interest rate was just a tad over four point one zero percent. So, and they, and they've pretty, pretty much been locked in for a longer period of time, so rates do fall, although I think they've actually been going up, I think the last couple of weeks a little bit, but we did lock in some, some over four percent rates for, for a while. Thank you.
Warrior report?
Yes, we've had several requests since, five. Won't leave them all, but some are very similar. One, one out of left field for me is the, any invoices for portable toilet rentals or?
I just, I saw that.
We, I don't think had any, so good news.
Portable.
Yeah. We, sometimes these are just folks that are just trying to see about possible business and sharing our information with others. So if there was questions from the board on any of them, I think we, we fulfilled them in the appropriate amount of time. Thank you.
Next, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the board go into closed session to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, student discipline, and school board, building, safety, and security.
Second.
We're moved in second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Weller?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Duckman?
Aye.
Garrett?
Aye.
Herring?
Aye.
Massa?
Aye.
Morley?
Aye.
Okay, we are not expecting any action after closed session, so Adam, you can close it down. Thank you all for coming.